I'm not sure if you can hear me. Maybe not. Janice, can you hear us? Maybe not. My goal is to see how long I can go without coughing. That's the.
Are you feeling any better? You look like you're feeling better.
Well, I'm feeling better than I was last week. But last week was. The doctor said something very strange after, uh, she said I had flu type A. And then she said, well, you're not as young as you used to be, so you should really, uh, ta- I said, what? That's vicious here, you know, let's be kind if we can.
Guys, we are, we are, we are live. We are live on YouTube FY. So we're still waiting, but we're, we're live, live streaming.
So. She, I just needed to pay close attention to things, so.
Keep a bottle of water near you in case you need to take a sip.
Water and Gatorade.
Oh, definitely.
Only at five, we're still only at five commissioners.
Uh, currently at six, Cora just joined.
Oh, fantastic.
I'm gonna go in and start.
Yes, cuz you have to leave. Go ahead.
Meeting will come to order. The time is now five thirty-two PM on Monday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairman of the Commission on the Arts and Humanities. Tonight I have a conflict which presents me, prevents me from attending the meeting for its duration. However, I've asked Gretchen Warden, Vice Chair of the Commission, to chair the meeting in my place. But I will now call the roll. When you hear your name, please answer present. Cora.
Present.
Julianne.
Present.
Cecily. Demetrius. Maggie, I'm sorry, Demetrius?
President.
Maggie. Kimber. Carla. Hector.
Is everyone just on mute or can I not hear anybody?
Uh, you, I'm speaking. I think others can hear me, is that correct?
Yes.
So Janice, you couldn't hear me? Uh, but we see you're there, Janice, so. Your next, the next one was Janice, and then Gretchen.
Here.
Good. A quorum is present. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session and is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under the meeting to the Office of Open Government at opengovoffice@dc.gov. Notice of the meeting was posted in the DC Register on the Commission's website, dcrts.dc.gov, and on, on the DC Office of Open Governments Central Meetings Calendar at opendec.gov. The meeting is being conducted in a virtual format, hybrid, with commissioners joining remotely using the Zoom meeting platform and some in person. The meeting is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of this meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the evening. Is there any objection to the agenda amendments that were previously circulated? Here no objection, the agenda for this meeting and minutes from the previous meeting stand as adopted. I'd like to welcome you this evening. Uh, we have a very interesting meeting this evening with reports from the Director and the Public Arts Committee. And so we look forward to a productive meeting. Thank you all for being here. Um, in the most recent meeting of the Governance Committee, it was settled that the Vice Chair, Secretary, and Treasurer positions are due for appointment or reappointment. Accordingly, the committee proposes a reappointment vote on both the Vice Chair and Secretary positions. For Vice Chair Gretchen Warden, year two of service with a three-year term. For Secretary Gillian Drensa, year two of service with a three-year term. And for Treasurer Janice Kim, year one of service with a three-year term. So, I will take a motion to approve, uh, these officers. Emotion, please? Can I be heard?
I hear you, Reggie. We just need a motion from the floor.
Yeah, motion, please.
I will, I will motion, even though it's a motion for myself, but.
That's alright, thank you. Thank you. So I will call the roll now. If you're in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Cora? Cora? Julianne?
Aye.
Cecily? Demetrius? Demetrius? Can the room hear me?
I bet we can't hear the room, Reggie.
Can you grab that mic? I'm sorry.
Demetrius? Maggie? Kimber?
Why can't we hear the voice of them?
Carla? Hector? Janice? You can nod if you're approving. And Gretchen?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. It does pass. Uh, now the. Now the Commission calls the Public Art Committee to present its FY twenty-five funding recommendations for Color the Curve.
Hi, um, I think Commissioner Sims isn't here, um, but I'm happy to jump in again.
Please proceed.
There we go.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we, we can. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, um, I was saying Commissioner Sims, I don't think is on, um, but we're happy to jump in. So, uh, I'm gonna hand it over to my colleague Deirdre Darden, our Public Art Coordinator, uh, to report out on the funding recommendations for the Color the Curve School Safety Program. And I think Deirdre is on.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
We can hear you.
We can hear you, thank you.
Uh, so I'm Deirdre Darden, Public Art Coordinator, um, and Project Manager for Color the Curve School Safety Program. Um, and today we bring a vote on the four finalists for FY twenty-five's Color the Curve School Safety Program. Um, and Color the Curve, as many of you know, is a collaborative design and placemaking project between uh, CH, CH, DDOT, and DCPS. Um, and we released an RFA to solicit applications from mural artists, um, who have a unique experience both in large-scale exterior muraling and youth engagement in their practice. And this year, we have three schools in wards, uh, one and six. And we are still accepting four finalists. Uh, one school will have two finalists paired to it. Um, so the vote today is for our four finalists, um, at a thirty thousand dollar grant each totaling a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, we reviewed all eligible applications. It was eighteen applications. The finalist scores are between eighty-three and ninety-one, uh, with exact figures on the report here. And, um, so that is our breakdown. And as always, um, we had a lot of outreach for this program. We had many new applicants, um, both to CH and specifically to Color the Curve Program. Um, the finalists are representing wards two, four, six, and eight. And, um, our review panel was a mix of past Color the Curve grantees, local mural artists, teaching artists, and our partners at DDOT and DCPS.
Thank you. Uh, so what's the resolution we're voting on specifically?
So the draft resolution is in red on the screen.
Yes, please read it.
Um, that the Commission adopt the funding recommendation for FY two thousand twenty-five Color the Curve School Safety Program as presented for a total funding amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you. So the committee will now come to vote on this important matter. I'll go through the roll call again. Cora?
Yes.
Julianne?
Yes.
Cecily? Demetrius?
Yes.
Maggie? Kimber? Carla? Hector? Janice?
Uh, can I, can I change my vote?
You can.
Yeah, I, I think I'll do, uh, what is the word, abstain?
Same, okay. Janice, I see Janice. Gretchen?
Hi.
Thank you. So it does pass. Thank you very much. So I'm now gonna turn the gavel over to Gretchen.
Good evening again, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. As we always do in our meetings, but we usually do it a little earlier than this, but because, um, Reggie has to leave us, we're now going to start a different way. I'm going to now read the land acknowledgement to you. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nacotchtin and the Piscataway people. We pay respects to their elders in past and present. Please take a moment to consider their legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of the DC Arts Commission. Okay, I believe we have a grantee in our Artist Spotlight. Is, um, Alexis Hartwick here?
Hi, that's me. Thank you all so much for having me today. I'm Alexis Hartwick, and I am with the Keegan Theater. The Keegan Theater has been around for twenty-seven years. We are located right in Dupont Circle in a really cute little residential area. It's a hundred and twenty-seat venue. If you haven't been, we hope that you will come and visit us soon. One of the focuses of the Keegan Theater is to bring the members of the DC community together through theater. So that's not just on our main stage. We do eight to ten shows per year, and they're highly recommended, Helen Hayes-nominated productions. Uh, but we also have a robust education program that focuses on supporting DC public schools. Um, and we focus specifically on DC. We don't branch out into Maryland and Virginia, so it's a really unique education department. And we also support new plays by underrepresented voices. And that's everything from the conception of the show to the workshop through the main stage. It's generally a three-year process. One of the great things about the Keegan Theater is that our small staff of eight are all DC residents. And that's really only made possible because of grant-making that you all do. And so we are so incredibly thankful that we are be able to focus on DC residents as a staff, as well as focusing on bringing in artists that are from DC and teaching artists. I've been a resident myself of DC since starting work at Keegan fifteen years ago. Again, would not have been possible without the support of the Commission. I'd like to invite you all to our next production, which is by Priyanka Shetty. Priyanka is Philadelphia-based, but she graduated from, um, University of Virginia. She's an Indian immigrant, and all three of her shows over the last, we, she is writing one-woman shows. She's done three of them, and we've supported them over the last four years. So this is the second installment. The show is called #Charlottesville, incredibly relevant to the times. And one of the great things that the arts can do is to really highlight the things that we're experiencing, as well as just putting them in historical context. We're thrilled to be doing several different panels, including taking Charlottesville into context and the power of protest. So those are free and open to the public. It's a great way for us to not only be doing the art on stage, but also connecting it to the greater context of the DC community. We're also absolutely thrilled to be having not only one, but two field trip initiatives this year. Through funding from Arts Midwest, we worked with five hundred students from DC public schools. They are coming to see a new adaptation of Romeo and Juliet called Robin and Jay, and it was written in collaboration with the students that are coming to see the show. So we believe strongly in not only presenting the work on stage, but involving students throughout the entire process. And then through funding from the DC Commission, an additional five hundred public school students are coming to Keegan for the stage reading of Mediculus, which is our third collaboration with Drew Anderson and Dwayne Lawson-Brown. Again, the students have been working on writing the show with the playwrights, and then they get to come and see the show on stage. So this year will be the stage reading, and then next year we'll bring the full show to the stage, showing students that it's not just the final product, but that there's a full process that's involved in all of the arts. So we really appreciate all of the work that you all do and all that you do to support us. I think right now we have a unique opportunity to shine the light on all the exceptional work of local DC theater artists and artists as a whole, especially as we look at kind of what's happening in the national context, especially here in DC. So anything and everything that you all do already to raise awareness of the amazing arts economy we have here to government officials, US government, and continuing to advocate for funding, promoting our work is greatly appreciated, and we're so thankful for all that you do. Thanks for having me today.
And thank you. Thank you very much. I've been to the Keegan, and you do some fantastic work there, and we're all very appreciative of your efforts.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say something, and you know I'm smiling, right, Gretchen?
I know you are.
Yes, because so similar to some of the things that we do, uh, we just had a program at Duke Ellington, uh, same thing, bringing history alive, having context. I, I think that's great, and I will definitely be visiting you soon. Congratulations on your work.
Absolutely. Okay, now we're moving on to our public comment, um, portion. The Commission welcomes your comments that are very important to us. Um, comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your remarks to the Chair. In this case, the Vice Chair, since Reggie's not here. Note that we will not be engaging in dialogue at, um, the meeting. And who do we have here?
I'm Diane Coburn-Bruning, Chamber Dance Project.
Yes, you are. Hi.
Hi, very well. And so let me first thank the Commission, especially through the pandemic, getting a lot of us um, to the other side of that and continuing to support. Um, we have one challenge that I share with a lot of the medium-sized, um, performing arts organizations in DC where we have a widening gap between, um, the cost of the theater rentals. Uh, we perform at Harmon Hall and Arena regularly. Um, after the pandemic, they understandably had to both increase their rental rates and their labor. So since the pandemic, uh, rental rates have gone up, uh, double. And our labor costs in those venues has gone up about thirty percent. Um, so one might say just raise ticket prices, right? Yeah, okay, two forces against us. One is that we know theater attendance went down during the pandemic and is still struggling to get at pre-pandemic levels. Um, the second is, um, there were forces against raising ticket prices, not just inflation for people, but we tried. So in twenty twenty-three, we had our regular ticket prices up, we thought a cool forty to fifty dollars, when the increases in the theater rental and the labor costs kept accelerating. The next year, we went to sixty-five to eighty dollars in these beautiful venues. But then, when we went into ticket sales for a month or two, we found we weren't selling as well. So then we went back and reduced ticket prices by fifteen percent. Um, this year, we're just starting at a, a lower level and trying to sell more. So that gap has widened between what Arena, Harmon Hall, and other major and probably smaller theaters are having to charge and what we can get for ticket revenue, which of course never, ever did cover it, but it's covering it even less. So I would like to humbly ask the Commission to consider a subsidy to DC groups going into theaters to offset the theater rental. Labor is more, um, variable, and that can be controlled by how much you do and all of that. But theater rental is a hard and fast number, and it's pretty hard to meet that. So I would welcome the Commission considering, um, a grant to organizations going into the theater that could just offset our rental. Thank you for all you're doing, and I would welcome all of you to come see us at Harmon Hall in June.
Thank you very much. Uh, your remarks are very well taken, and everything you said is right on point. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have, um, I'm gonna call the special remarks. I'm a very special guest, Nina Albert, and she's the Deputy Mayor for Planning and Economic Development. Nina, are you, there you are.
I am here. Can everybody hear me okay?
Uh-huh.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, thank you, uh, to Erin for inviting me to join and to the Commission for giving me some time on the agenda. Um, as many of you may or may not know, the Commission on Arts and Humanities is within the DEMPED umbrella. Uh, so we work very closely with, uh, independent agencies and commissions, uh, all of whom contribute to, um, our economic landscape. And so, um, you know, the arts play an important part of, uh, the economic landscape in DC and, and elsewhere. Uh, so today, the, one of the reasons I wanted to, um, get some time on, uh, the, the, your agenda here is cuz I did wanna talk about and, and open up a dialogue between the Commission and, uh, my office about, um, how it is that the arts can support our overall economic development goals for the city. Uh, coming out of the pandemic, the major thing that was, uh, really facing our city as something that we needed to recover from was how telework was fundamentally changing, uh, the office market. And so much of DC tax revenues, uh, is, um, is resulting from commercial property taxes, i.e. office. And so with the reduction in demand for office, we were seeing a contraction in DC revenues potentially. And I had a, a very good strategy, I thought, and the mayor had a very good strategy around how to replace and reposition downtown to be a much more mixed-use community. And that is all sort of shared in the DC Comeback Plan, which was our five-year economic growth strategy coming out of the pandemic. Um, that agenda was already, uh, a pretty, uh, robust, um, agenda. And the way I had framed our strategies, uh, coming out and how, how I looked at the Comeback Plan and converted it into something that people could really understand was a four, um, pronged or four-pillared agenda. Number one, uh, how do we grow new jobs and really attract new business to DC? Uh, to fill some of that office space, uh, included focusing on our high-growth industries. Those are tech industries, marketing and communications, um, consulting, um, and, and others. So there was, uh, you know, biotech and health tech, uh, all, th- that was kind of the, the, the industries that, uh, weren't our biggest industries. Our biggest industries are always feds, eds, and meds. But the high-growth industries that were, uh, kind of outpacing, um, their job growth compared to others were, are those tech, uh, consulting and, um, marketing and communications industries. So that was one leg of the pillar is, um, you know, continue to attract high-growth industries that are, uh, uh, coming to DC because they want access to our high-skilled talent that's here. The second leg of the stool of our strategy for economic growth in the district post-pandemic was really, um, a housing strategy that, um, was delivering housing that is excessively priced for all. That meant affordable housing at the lowest end of the income spectrum, solving for middle-income housing, which is, uh, kind of a big, and, you know, what's the hole in the doughnut? And then even providing more housing at the upper end, uh, because there is benefit to the district from a tax revenue perspective to be able to produce more housing at all levels of the income spectrum. Um, and in terms of talent attraction, being able to attract, uh, young workers, uh, as well as hang on to, um, you know, retirees as they, uh, near the end of their career. Uh, so that middle-income ban becoming, uh, increasingly important, um, strap, part of the strategy. So that was the second leg of the stool. Third leg of the stool was, uh, delivering, uh, unique destinations and entertainment. So we know that people will travel, uh, to cities so that they can get something unique that they can't get anywhere else. And that's really where the arts and entertainment component sort of come alive and come together. And so I think of sports, arts, and entertainment as all being part of this ecosystem of the creative economy and how that contributes to why people come to DC, not just to work, but also to visit. Because that's an important, uh, revenue generator and job generator for the city. And this is really the component that I wanna talk to you all about. And then the fourth leg of the stool, uh, that has always been an important part, not only of the district's identity, but also of our economic future, is the diversity of our businesses and entrepreneurs. And, um, we, uh, there are not very many cities like ours that have true diversity, um, uh, of, of all sorts across every different demographic. And we know that businesses are coming to Washington DC because they value not only the diversity of our workforce, but also, um, of our businesses. And so we have a goal of having, uh, thirty-three percent of all DC businesses, uh, being owned by people of color and, and so it's an important component. So those were the four legs of the stool. The question is, how now with the changes in one of our, um, sort of foundational economies, which is the federal government, does this strategy shift? Um, and so, you know, like I said, the foundation of the, the DC region is feds, eds, and meds, and now the federal government is shrinking significantly. Um, and so, uh, the mayor rolled out not too long ago a focus on providing support to federal workers who've lost their jobs and repositioning them into private sector or DC government or other jobs that are available that, um, we have long waited to fill. So we are, uh, as a city, very focused on that. Um, however, uh, we also need to lean in even more meaningfully now into growth. So how do we grow, um, those areas that I just mentioned? High-growth industries, because we're seeing tech continue to grow. We're seeing marketing and communications, um, continue to grow aggressively. Uh, we're also seeing, um, some financial institutions, uh, start to take significant interest in the district. I talk about those industries because they relate to the arts. The technology industry in general, uh, really thrives off of innovation. And almost every, um, sort of, uh, tech-centered economy has a significant component and relationship with a creative or artistic economy. And so, um, it's because it's the, it's the creativity that is common and the desire to innovate that is in common between the arts or the creative economy and technology. And so, as we lean more into business attraction around technology, I'm interested in where that intersection, uh, with the, uh, with, um, the creative economy, like, resides. And how do we develop a strategy at that intersection? So that's one thing. The other thing that I wanted to kind of bring up was that second leg of the stool, which was unique entertainment destinations. And again, I use entertainment broadly to include sports, culture, performing arts, visual arts, um, and, and music, you know, concerts. So right now, what we've seen is that our festivals are drawing bigger and bigger crowds, and there's significant demand for it. So, um, we are, and we've seen the growth of Art All Night. We've seen, uh, the growth of even the holiday market, um, you know, uh, downtown this past year. Um, we've seen the growth of, um, you know, uh, various different festivals and activations where people are yearning for one community, um, as well as, you know, that, um, diversity of offerings or of, of new experiences. And so, um, that's kind of one area where we're looking to both promote more effectively as well as grow strategically some of these marquee events because they become differentiators for us as a city and a re, like the cherry blossoms. People will come all over from the region. They'll come from internationally because it's something that you can only experience in DC and nowhere else. And so it's important from, uh, from a branding. And so it's important from, from a branding perspective, as well as from a resource allocation perspective, to have marquee events that you invest sort of deeply and strategically in because people will travel and spend a night, two nights, four nights for these unique events that you can't get anywhere else. In terms of entertainment, we're also looking to diversify and include more family-oriented events. Because we also are seeing that families, if there is, if there, so there's the Smithsonian's and other art institutions, for example, where people will come and then they'll leave again that same day. If there's kind of another layer that appeals to somebody else in the family, people will stay longer. And so not only do we get to introduce Washington DC to people who are family-oriented, not only do we get to serve our existing residents who have families, and remember, families are obviously from young to old, multi-generational. We're really thinking holistically about how entertainment can be provided for people, for families, you know, for the modern family, right? That includes a lot of different generations. And then, and then the last thing that I'll say about the entertainment and destination attraction is really retail. And we're seeing that retail and entertainment are now becoming, there's a lot of innovation in how those two combine. So if you go out to Vegas, you'll see entertainment being leaned into, but then they're incorporating retail. And in terms of the retailer that are moving forward, they're incorporating entertainment and their brand promotion into the brick and mortar solution. And so I've had some great conversations with Erin in the past about the fact that DC doesn't have a lot of commercial art and galleries that are, that include, you know, art for sale. So again, there's, the entertainment experience includes retail. Because people will go and they'll be, especially when they're traveling, want to buy something. And again, all of that's part of the creative economy. So that's another area of intersection that I would like to engage the Commission on Arts and Humanities on, which is around a strategy for making sure that we're really delivering unique and diverse destination experiences. The last two things that I'll just bring up are our continued focus on downtown and repositioning downtown. We are looking to have a much more mixed-use downtown. Right now, it's about 87% commercial office space. And we'd really like to move to closer to 30% to 50% of commercial office space. So you can see significant change in mix of uses. That will take place over time, right? Like 20 years. That's a, that's a long horizon. However, in order to incorporate more residential, the public space has to soften and be designed more for neighborhood, for neighbors and residents and communities. And so there's an aspect of that that has, you know, people often talk to me and I, you know, talk to others about needing more grocery, right? Like those are the community-serving, neighborhood-serving retailers. It's grocery, you know, drugstores, pet stores, all that kind of stuff. There's green space that's needed to be incorporated. There's schools that would need to be incorporated as well as civic and community services. And so I think that, again, art, whether it's public art that's in the public right-of-way or programs that get incorporated, there is another intersection of strategy between the Commission on Arts and Humanities and how it can help support the overall district's repositioning of downtown. We talk about downtown, but we also are working significantly east of the river and on our Anacostia waterfront. So there are some new opportunities. One is already established but can continue to be promoted and supported, which is the development of the Anacostia Arts to Go-Go District. And making sure, it's our only true arts district that we've named as such. And so again, it's had, the district's made significant investments, particularly in historic Anacostia. There are now 112 businesses in historic Anacostia. And many of them are attracted there because of the arts district and what that promises. So again, another like neighborhood where we could focus and really make sure that that brand is truly felt and promoted and supports the local or our local artists that want to locate there, as well as the businesses that are going to be attracted to be there. So anyway, that's kind of an overview of a lot of different things. But what I'm hoping that you're hearing is opportunities for strategic alignment and partnership between my office and the Commission on Arts and Humanities. And I would like to just hear from you how you've seen in the past a really strong alignment between our two entities and how to work together and maybe how we can sort of bring to light what, and, and sort of marry what we're doing with what you're doing so that we can have a really supportive creative economy. So with that, I will stop talking, but I'm happy to answer any questions or engage in a conversation, whatever you all have time for or however you would like to engage.
Well, thank you so much for your comments, Nina. One thing you said really rang a bell with me. I know so many artists that are looking for opportunities and venues where they can sell their art. And I mean, I could just rattle off so many of them right now if they just had the space. Now, so many of them have told me, we have lots of art to sell, but we can't afford to rent space. So those are some things perhaps that we could work on together as a partnership to figure out where we can, where we can have these types of opportunities for them. But I'm sure we have lots of them. Erin?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for joining us and for supporting us through our space survey as well. So we could see where those intersections do lie. And I think that all the commissioners have brought some great strengths, rather, they themselves have their own festivals. I know the French Festival brought the city together a great deal for a number of years. Or what we see that their own entities are doing within the community. So there's great spaces of intersection and great places for us to work together on ensuring that. Something that was interesting, and I think I may have sent this over to you. We saw, we did, for the first time, one of our staff members did the research to see just how many job opportunities our projects, events, and festivals bring to the district. I think we noted around over, around 3,000 job opportunities are created through the grants we put out through our festivals and events. So I think being able to understand with every dollar that we invest with these festivals, I think it speaks completely to what you're saying. The festivals are growing and they are creating more job opportunities. What more can we do? I think we will be bringing Coda Works to Washington later this year. That's a great place for us to kind of spotlight how the intersection of technology and art do meet and what kind of job creation and what can, what can we sustain here and keep here versus just coming just for the summit and leaving. How many of those people can we keep in Washington and show them that this is a place where we want you to do business and also to do your art? So we're excited. So this conversation is only just beginning, and I'm grateful that you were able to join us today. I'm grateful for it. Thank you.
Can I say something, please? Oh, I'm sorry, unless you want to say something in response to Erin. Is there a space available for, for artists not only to sell their art, but at like, Gretchen said, I know artists who need space not only to sell their art, but to be able to create their art. Well, I'll give you a perfect example. One of the artists that everybody knows that I have gotten to know very well is Stephen Weitzman, who was the one who did the Statue of Marion that's in front of the building. And he is changing, he's working in Maryland. He wants to come to DC, do his art, sell his art, and teach it. So he would be a great get for us. Is there a way that we could make that available for him? Because we will all benefit from it. But as, as Gretchen said, you know, the cost of renting these spaces have been cost prohibitive. And we have empty spaces that we can turn into retail spaces and education spaces. We should really work together on that.
Yeah, I'll say the way that that works for, I think this is perfect conversation. If there is what I'll call a tenant, right? Or somebody who's of a notable name that would, that, that, you know, would bring like significant or whatever either brand to the city, jobs or other industries, you know, like is a catalyst in some way because they are a unique, you know, brand name in and of themselves. Please come and talk to me about that.
What do you think, Gretchen? Do you think that he would fit that bill?
I absolutely do. Not only did he create the statue of our former mayor, but he has, will have very shortly two statues in the Capitol. So he is known across the country. And he has actually been talking to us about space for some time, not only for his use, but to teach sculpture and to, I just think it would be magnificent if we could find someplace like that for him. He's been talking about it for a couple of years, but we haven't gotten there. But Nina, I kind of think you're the person to make this happen.
Yeah, I'm like, people basically like my, you know, besides like the subtitle under Deputy Mayor is Space Finder. I mean, you know, I mean, usually people come and talk to me because they have, you know, a person or a business or an opportunity that they think is really important for the district. And they want to know how we can support that. So, yeah, I mean, things like that, anything that's catalytic, anything that's, you know, unique or that starts to reposition us is of significant interest to me. So don't be shy. Either, you know, Erin has direct line to me. And, and you're also all welcome to contact me individually anytime.
Well, you know.
Okay, look forward, right? Can I, can I please say something?
Yeah, hold on one second. Yeah, look forward to calls from us because we are going to follow up on that one. Go ahead.
Um, I just want, hello, I'm Julianne Brienza. I'm a commissioner here. And I just wanted to kind of put some things into, some things that I'm trying to be engaged in, which is the comprehensive plan that's coming up and reviewing the last comprehensive plan that, that we are kind of coming out of. And the cultural plan that we don't really use and the cultural district downtown that's being talked about. One thing that would benefit our community that is here today and our community that can come in the future is a space downtown that is set up to be used by theater artists, visual artists, creative people that don't know what they're doing yet, and the district government helping to make that possible with a developer under a long-term lease. That would, that would be attractive to visitors coming off the mall to see that sort of vibrancy. Sort of what Ian is doing a little bit, but actually opening it up to more people. So whatever way that can, I'm going to be plugging into all of these things over the next few months. But that would make a huge difference for local artists and artists that hopefully will come and live here in the future.
Thank you, Julianne. Anyone else? Well, Deputy Mayor, I think you just opened yourself up for a lot of emails and phone calls.
Okay, well, I hope that people are respectful of, of my email. I see here that you're sending this out to the public. That's okay. But no, it's no problem. But if we could, I mean, the, the things that, where we are right now as a city is needing to focus on growth and needing to focus on investments that create jobs for people and economic opportunity for our city. That, that is our true north in what we need to invest in, in, in the city. So that, those are the areas where I think there's a win-win. And I know that there's lots of opportunities for us to work more closely together. By the way, I mean, Erin, I just, I just want to say has been a great partner to me and a great educator to me on, you know, kind of where, how we can collaborate. And so I just am extending that to all of you as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
And thank you for including me today.
Alrighty. Okay, I think next on our agenda is Erin.
Hello, everyone. African-American male here, white kind of sweater, balling with a little green on my necklace in honor of Lady Patrick's Day, so don't pitch me. We'll start with our staff updates. We're awaiting an approval from DCHR regarding our procurement analyst. That's the person that'll be joining our, our resource allocation unit. We're hoping to have an update soon regarding this. We want to thank Tiani Veronato, E, as we've called her, for her time with us as grant manager. She's brought some positive energy and great team spirit. So we're excited about her next chapter. And the telework schedule for the staff will be updated April 1st. With more updates to follow, we will be adding an additional day into the office starting out in April. So that's one of our updates. As far as grants are concerned, we have some grant updates coming later, but currently the following grants are open for application. Journal Operating Support Grant Support Program, which is GOS. East Arts Grant Program, Projects, Events, and Festivals, PEF. As of noon today, we've had 15 applications drafted and 29 complete. Complete, please be sure to submit your applications by the deadline of April 22nd at 10:00 PM. Please check out our workshops and the schedule that we have on our website and Eventbrite pages. There are a total of four workshops between this week and next. And I would like to note, we are one of the few agencies that hold multiple workshops to help people do the grant writing and how to understand our systems. We also have Grant Live Chats are online every Friday from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM. And the team is offering in-person office hours on Wednesdays from 11:00 AM to 1:30 PM. We are trying to listen to this feedback and go right back into the public. So we're trying to help the best we can. Oversight hearing, we had our performance oversight hearing on March 6th. A lot of attention at the hearing was given, was on GOS, our grant-making policies and where we stand as a driver of economic development within the creative economy of the district. I'd like to reiterate that grantees received their awards sooner this cycle as compared to last year. Our awards reflected community feedback and our GOS awards represented a $3.5 million investment downtown alone. The grant-making process at CEH is competitive. We encourage all grantees to tell their stories in a way that describes their impact on the district. And we also encourage the public to sign up to be panelists so that our panels can be as robust as possible. Budget oversight hearing is set for April the 10th, and the team is presently preparing in preparation for that. The Vagabond Exhibition and Behind the Uniform. I would like to thank the Public Arts Team along with the Events, Communications, and the Curators of the 50 Year, 50 Years of Hope and Ha-Has for what was an inspiring exhibition that closed on March 1st. Behind the Uniform will open April 10th at 5:00 PM. It is a veterans-themed exhibition that we are excited to launch in our gallery. And I, as a veteran, am excited to see that. If you have any questions about the upcoming exhibition, please reach out to our Public Arts Manager, Corinne Miller, or our Curator, Dr. Michelle May Curry. Looking at Portrait Out Loud, out loud. Nyla Dinkins, Jr. at Benjamin Banneker High School came in first place again this year. Ms. Dinkins will be representing the district at the national finals on May 5th through 7th. We wish her good luck. Our runner-up was Morgan Lloyd, Jr. at St. Anselms Abbey School. Morgan is a two-time participant and the third participant in his family to participate, to participate in, in regional finals. Mr. Lloyd has two older brothers. There were eight contestants and approximately 65 guests in attendance at Planet Word Museum on Saturday. The district ranked number four in the nation in terms of students' participation, having reached approximately, listen to this, 8,231 students across participating schools, which is awesome. Kudos to the team, Andrea Brown, along with our events and outreach teams for making this a reality. Lastly, we're going to talk about a strategic plan. The CEH Technical Evaluation Committee, TECH, met to review the strategic plan at a meeting on March 1. at a meeting on March fourth, twenty twenty-five. A vendor technical evaluation report was then sent to O C P on March sixth. Upon review, questions from the T E C were sent to O C P last Friday to forward to the offers and O C P will be canceling the solicitation and issuing a new one ASAP to be more specific and address issues and questions that came up during our consensus, consensus meeting. Uh, that is my report and I thank you all for your support. Uh, and, uh, where I'm asked, flu season is upon us. Madam Chair, I think you're still on mute.
You are correct. I said, thank you. That was very informative. All right, um, Finance Committee.
Good evening. I, I think, is this my baton pass to Janice? I think we are, um, Yes, I see Brandon on, so I'll let Brandon give us an update and we are, um, yeah, so.
By the way, before you go any farther, um, Kimber, thank you so much. You've done just a yeoman's job at this for the last couple of years and we really appreciate every moment you've put into it.
Uh, it's been a great opportunity, so I'm excited to see it continue to move forward on the Finance Committee.
Okay.
Um, so thank you all. Uh, my name is Brandon Saunders, Resource Allocation Officer. I'm wearing a gray patterned sweater and an African-American male. And, uh, yes, I'd like to just reiterate those comments. Uh, thank you and a shout out to Kimber for her service and just helping me get settled in, um, set up to speed, um, so to speak. And I'm also happy to, um, welcome Janice as well. And we actually already, um, spoken and have a time to kind of set up a little bit to bring her on board and, uh, and add additional, you know, context that, you know, she'll need for the, uh, sort of position. So, uh, very exciting and on both ways. And of course, I'm also very excited to, uh, present, uh, this evening to, uh, Friday's report. Um, so our committee met on Friday, uh, March thirteenth. And we're just about at the quarter-two mo- uh, thank you for, next slide. I appreciate that. Um, so we're just actually at the quarter-two moment, uh, for, uh, the fiscal year. So it kind of presents a pretty good uh, overall. Uh, you can go back to the previous slide, actually. Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, so it brings a pretty good midpoint for where the agency has had overall in terms of its expenditure rate. Uh, definitely it's ob- ob- uh, obligated rate overall. So as you can see, I like to direct to the far right column even though that's, I know it's a little small, but I had the numbers. So I read, read it overall. So it, for the breakdown, but on the grand side, there's only about seventeen point five percent of funds that have been unobligated. So that means that a purchase order has not, uh, started in, in the dis process overall. Um, this is due to honestly just a lot of contextual-based situations, some internal to the agency, um, some external to the agency. Um, it really does vary. Um, that is the stage that we're at, uh, overall. And so um, so that's, we're on pretty good, uh, uh, speed, um, and pace relative to, I think, to previous year. Uh, overall due to some, uh, hard work by everyone involved and to, to, um, there's a little bit of a, uh, automation in the process overall, which I'm happy that it seems like is a success and will be, um, just continue to, uh, build upon that, upon that success, uh, with greater efficiency. And also on the admin side, I'll, I'll point out that there's fifty-eight point five percent, uh, remaining of the budget, uh, remaining. So at the end of every fiscal year, it is actually the goal to spin down to as close, uh, to zero as possible, um, just due to, um, it shows the expenditure rate and how useful we are, uh, you know, disseminating our funds all the way across the board. And so it's pretty appropriate about March tenth. It's that fifty-eight point five right on pace, uh, into the midway part of the year. Uh, with some additional, uh, contracts and purchases remaining that now could break a little bit more into, but actually it's a pretty good chance to go to the next slide. Thank you, thank you. And so on this slide, you'll see essentially the breakdown between, uh, Personnel Services and uh, the main categories in terms of non-personnel rate that shows just where, uh, some of the more available budget that, um, is at currently. And there is a, uh, internal spin plane that has a, essentially a even plan over the next, uh, remaining six months in order to, um, expand some of those funds across multiple purchase orders. Um, we can also go to the next slide. And then this slide, excuse me, is just a greater breakdown, um, a little bit more of a granular view um, of the previous slide on the non-personnel services side, uh, overall, um, for those that are interested. And so we can go to the next slide. And then finally, uh, this is just the overall breakdown of each, uh, the grant program, uh, overall. So you can see just the expenditure rate and where everything is at in each part of the process. Um, just a couple of notes I also like to add overall that, um, our small cap program is essentially been processed and we're actually um, pretty much running pretty, pretty, pretty smoothly, um, on that as well. So that's pretty exciting overall. And so, yes, I just want to continue to, um, for those who are still at the very beginning of their, uh, uh, purchase order phrase, uh, phase in which they haven't received their funds, please just continue to work with your grant manager and uh, we're working internally every day to continue, um, you know, getting one, getting everybody what they need in that regard. And so, uh, thanks. That's all I have, uh, to share.
Well, as usual, you did a very good job. Do we have any questions? Even better job, no questions.
Um, my emails also, I think, public, so feel free to ask, um, you know, there, I try to provide as much transparency as possible. I'm also excited that we will be, um, presenting, um, at our budget, um, performance or, excuse me, budget oversight meeting, excuse me, um, next month as well. Um, so that'll be a pretty exciting, uh, that we're working internally as well. So.
What's the date of the budget? What's the date of the budget oversight hearing? Do you know?
Tentatively is for April the tenth. Um, I think Phil maybe didn't. Uh, he can, uh, alluded at the performance here and that it's still kind of in the works, but that is a tentative date, April tenth.
Okay. All right. There are no other questions for the Finance Committee. I know Grants Committee has something to say. We always have something to say.
Yes, yes.
Terrell, are you there?
Yep.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Good evening. Um, how's everybody doing? Uh, my name's Terrell Johnson, African-American male, uh, black shirt, black, um, jacket on. Um, we have some pretty exciting things, so I will be brief, but, um, some great updates. So first off, our F Y twenty-six spring grants are open. Um, our F Y twenty-six General Operating Support Grant Program, G O S, East Arts Grant Program, E A, Projects, Events or Festival P E F are now open and will close on Tuesday, April twenty-second. Our new F Y twenty-five Capital Projects Large Grant Program, C P L, will open on Tuesday, April first. Um, for the General Operating Support Program, the General Operating Support Grant Program, G O S, offers general operating support to nonprofit arts, humanities and arts education organizations whose primary mission focuses is in one or more of the arts or humanities disciplines. G O S applicants must determine the ways in which their ongoing programming aligns with C A H goal to encourage artistic expression and learning opportunities so that all District Columbia residents and visitors may experience the rich culture of the history. G O S application categories are G O S generalists, G O S service organizations and G O S capacity building. Please note for F Y twenty-five G O S awardees that plan on opting into the two-year agreement for F Y twenty-six will not need to complete a full application. A short form will be provided via the Grants Portal on Friday, March twenty-eighth. Uh, please contact me directly. If you have any questions, I can be reached at terrell.johnson@dc.gov. Our East Arts Grant Program, the closing date, April twenty-second. East Art furthers C H's mission by encouraging progress in the arts and humanities in the District of Columbia by supporting nonprofit arts, humanities, arts education and service organizations who significantly contribute to the District of Columbia as a world-class culture capital. The Grant Opportunity Program goals are provide access to high-quality arts and humanities experiences for residents who reside in the northeast and southeast quadrants of the District of Columbia, enhance the quality of life, supporting a vibrant community identity through the arts and humanities. Projects, events or festivals are P E F individual and organization grant. Closing date, April twenty-second as well. P E F further C A H mission by encouraging progress in the arts and humanities in the District of Columbia by supporting nonprofit arts, humanities, arts education and service organizations who significantly contribute to the District of Columbia as a world-class culture capital. P E F is open for projects of all sizes that de- demonstrate district impact and engage district residents and visitors. Arts and humanities projects may include, but not limited to, concerts, visual arts expositions, uh, literary reading or festivals that feature dance, folk art, film, music, theater and other art forms. Um, new for F Y twenty-five Capital Grants, Capital Projects Large Grant Program, C P O. The closing date is May sixth. The C P O further C A H's mission by encouraging progress in the arts and humanities in the District of Columbia by supporting nonprofit arts, humanities, arts education and service organizations that significantly contribute to the District of Columbia as a world-class culture capital. Grants are awarded on a competitive basis for the purpose of supporting either improvements of a facility located in the District of Columbia with a tax valuation of at least a million dollars or the purchase of a facility located in the District of Columbia with a tax valuation of a million dollars by an applicant with a thirty-year lease on that facility. Uh, important information here. The R F A and opening date will be Tuesday, April first, twenty twenty-five. The R F A will be available on our website, d c arts dot D C dot gov. The amount of the awards grants awarded under this program have a minimum award amount of nine hundred thousand and a maximum award amount of one point five million per grant. Length of the awards, this is, goes over two years. So, um, it will be for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. So October first, twenty twenty-four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Um, again, if you have questions about our large cap grant, you can reach out to myself as well as Terrence Brown, um, on the Grants Team. We're here to help. The Grants Team is excited to announce in-person office hours for grantees and applicants starting on Wednesday, March nineteenth. Our grant managers will be available to answer your specific questions about your grant or application every Wednesday in person from eleven A M to one thirty P M. Please R S V P via, via our Eventbrite pa- on our webpage. We are also available on our usual Zoom live chat Fridays from two P M to three P M. We did a soft test of the onsite office hours last Wednesday and we had a stream of people coming in. So it was really successful. So it sounds like people want to get back in person. So we're happy to launch that as well. And I'm open, answer any questions.
That's amazing. I'm so glad that was successful. So many people joined. Questions, anyone? Okay. Are there any other, um, committee reports? I don't have any on my list here.
Yes, Governance Committee.
Okay, Governance, um, Hector shaking his head no, so that means there's none there. So Governance.
All right. Good evening. Uh, my name is Julianne Brienza. I am a white woman with fifty percent Irish heritage. So happy St. Patrick's Day to all those who celebrate. And I am not wearing green, but I'm wearing a yellow shirt. Uh, the Governance Committee met on Thursday, March thirteenth. Um, in attendance were myself, uh, Reggie Van Lee and Gretchen Wharton and David Martins and David Saint John, who is our Staff Attorney Advisor. The Governance Committee reports the following updates to the full commission. Committee participation and assignments. The committee reviewed, um, the commissioner's requirement that each member serve on two to three committees. Members were emailed to confirm their assignments and participation. Committee reports and meeting notices. Committee chairs are reminded via email that the following requirement, of the following requirement to allow proper notice, all committee report, reports shall be sent to the Executive Director or their designee at, at least four days prior to the meeting where the report is to be presented. I would just like to state, I don't think we have ever done this and I really think it should be two days. So if we can work over the before the end of this fiscal year to make sure that we are doing this in a little bit of a more proper manner to help the staff put the public meeting together. It would be probably appreciated by more than just me. Committee meeting calendars. Currently, three of the seven committees have, have submitted a full calendar of meeting dates for the current fiscal year. If committee chairs are unable to set a full calendar of meeting dates, all, all members must be notified of meeting dates that, as they are scheduled. We encourage continued progress on this matter before the fiscal year ends. Commissioner participation in grant review panels. All commissioners are required to serve on at least one grant review panel. However, during the committee's discussion on this, it was noted that this requirement is not currently being met and that all commissioners have been emailed regarding this and staff have been asked for guidance on cre- on increasing participation in the next grant cycle. Sponsorship S O P and Bega opinion. The committee discussed the standard operating procedure for sponsorship and the rationale behind it. The agency is currently awaiting an opinion from Bega. Additionally, it was outlined that the agency's bylaws state that negotiating and entering into agreements, contracts or commitments with public or private entities are subject to the advice and direction of the chair. The committee recommends that once the Bega opinion is received that the S O P be developed to align with the agency's bylaws, ensuring that the chair's involvement in sponsorship agreements. This item will be reviewed again by the committee at the June meeting. Public information and communication. During the current environment, the committee recommends that the agency continue to provide information and updates to its constituents as they become available. And finally, it is very exciting. We have a new Governance Committee member. Uh, I'm thrilled to welcome Commissioner O'Neill as a new member of the Governance Committee. And that is the report. Thank you.
Yay, May. Thank you very much. Um, for those of you who have ever worked in and around governance and trying to read things twenty times and fifty different iterations of them, it's a lot of work. And my hat's off to Julianne because she's done a fabulous job on all of this. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Anybody else? We gotta be kidding. I'm missing something?
We have a public art report?
Oh, that's right. We did the vote, but we didn't do the full report. Thank you.
That's fine. Um, thank you. Um, and, uh, our Chair, Commissioner Sim, isn't here tonight. Uh, I'm Corinne Miller. I'm the Public Arts Manager at D C Commission. I'm a white woman with glasses and I'm wearing a pink blazer. So the Public Art Committee, um, did not meet last week. Um, but they were able to accomplish some things, uh, via email. So we shared the staff report as well as the Color of the Curve information that you regarded and shared earlier. Uh, so, uh, a quick, uh, summary of work that the team's been doing. So we've been working on recurring programs and grant lines like Public Art Building Communities, the Art Bank Program, Color of the Curve School Safety Program and Art Exhibition Curatorial Grants. Uh, the team's also been working on some special projects and planning efforts around the Coda Work Summit, which will be a public art conference held in the district uh, this coming September. Uh, we've been working on a special loan of the Art Bank Collection um, in collaboration with the European Union delegation. Um, other special projects we're working on include researching a potential collaboration with the D C Department of Energy and Environment, um, around, uh, possible, uh, Artist Design License plate program. And then we've been working with the Office of the Chief Technology Officer as well, uh, to research and refine plans to map the public art collection. Additionally, our curator, Michelle May Curry, is Additionally, our curator, Michelle May Curry, is developing the F Y twenty-six calendar for the Ice Street Gallery, which will include two art exhibition curatorial grants, one with an open theme and one with a social justice theme, and a jury exhibition grant program as well as our annual D C Art Now exhibition. Michelle has also been leading efforts to research a potential Metro Arts Writing Fellowship grant to support arts writing and recently held a community focused group to gather some feedback around that. I also want to mention that we've been in communication with the D C Department of Transportation regarding a letter that they, that was received from the U S Department of Transportation on application of murals or other artworks in the traffic way. It requests to identify areas of non-compliance. All artworks that we've installed historically using grant funds are installed in accordance with Federal Highway Administration's guidelines. Any future murals will be similarly installed. I just wanted to mention that. The next thing on the agenda we already covered, that's the Color the Curve Program, which we're very excited about. So we'll continue to provide updates on that. Director Myers mentioned the Art Exhibition Curatorial Grants and the Fifty Years of Hope and Ha Ha's Exhibition, as well as the Behind the Uniform Exhibition that's coming up. I'll just note that in your packets and online are additional information about upcoming event dates and special programs. So please note those and join us. We would love to have you. I also want to mention a couple of updates on our Art Bank Program Grant. So the grant administration for F Y twenty-five is nearing completion with only eight grant T V's still in stages of grant payment processing. So we're well ahead of schedule compared to that of F Y twenty-four. And then looking ahead to the F Y twenty-six Art Bank Program. We're planning a launch to the public on Monday, April fourteenth, so that's coming soon. Our curator, Michelle May Curry, has also been building out a targeted list of artists and arts organizations to ensure a robust outreach for the program. We'll send information when we have it and always appreciate help spreading the word about this program. A quick update on Murals D C. So we've been in communication with the Department of Public Works to try and come together on a new M O U for F Y twenty-five. So there's continued communications about that. We haven't moved forward yet, but are hoping that something's resolved soon around the program. What else? Art Collections Management. So the Art Bank Program continues to be in, in very high demand. We have twenty open requests for the Art Bank Loan Program. One thing that I wanted to mention is last month, our team was able to host a gallery talk and tour at the Department of Health, D C Health and Wellness Center for their staff. So it was a really nice way to reach out across agencies and engage a little bit more deeply about this program that we do. And we've had some recent installations at the Department of Consumer Licensing and Protection and a couple of council members' offices. And then the final thing that I'll mention is work continues on the Public Art Building Communities grantees for the F Y twenty-five cycle. The F Y twenty-six R F A or the Request for Applications is now live. So we appreciate anyone's help in spreading the word about the grant program. And that request for applications will be open for a few months, so it's not due until July. And we have at least three different workshops planned if folks have questions or want more information about the program. So that is it for me. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Corinne? You do a magnificent job. I have a number of Color the Curve installations in my neighborhood and it just makes me smile to drive or walk past them. It really does. It's, they're just amazing. And I've been to, you know, a number of the, excuse me, a number, a number of the other installations that you've had, but you guys do a fabulous job, just a fabulous job. And for those of you who don't know, as you go into these government buildings and look at all the great artwork that's there, that's in the council members' offices, the majority of it has come from R C A H Art Bank. They come over and choose things and it's all wonderful. So thanks again for all of your help. Okay, anybody else? We gotta be kidding. Is there any new business? Something we didn't discuss, something that's not on my sheet of paper here? Okay, well, as a reminder, our tentative date for the budget hearing is April tenth. There'll be more news on that as the date is actually confirmed. And no further business? No hands up, no chats? Okay, we're all happy people here. There being no further business, the next meeting of the commission will be held on Monday, April twenty-first at five thirty P M. The time is now six forty-six P M and we are adjourned.